This meeting of the Board of Trustees of Tyler ISD is called to order. We have the presence of a quorum. The meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted. In the time and manner required, we will now go into executive session. We're now returning from executive session. We do have some action to follow. We have a director of fine arts that we need to hire, Dr. Crawford.
Yeah, Board, as y'all are aware, Sandy Newton, who's done a good job for us for, I don't know, five years or so, has left and gone back to Humble ISD. And really appreciative of Ms. Newton. Today, we have in front of you a recommendation for Ms. Laney O'Connell as the Director of Fine Arts.
Great. Do I have a motion on that item?
I move that we confirm Laney O'Connell as Director of Fine Arts.
Second. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. The motion carries. Ms. O'Connell, thank you so much and congratulations. Come up and say a word if you'd like.
I promise I won't make the next number. We'll save that for the next one, but thank you so much.
I'm gonna hold you to it.
Mr. Washman, Trustees, Dr. Marty Crawford, I really thank you for this honor to become Tyler ISD's next Director of Visual and Performing Arts. I really am looking forward to serving this community and serving this great organization of fine arts professionals and really helping them take it to the next level of excellence. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, do we have any public participation? No public participation, okay. All right, next, we have a public hearing on our state compensatory education.
Chief School Officer Cassandra Chopper's gonna come up here and provide the annual report on state compensatory education.
I'm Steph.
Yes.
So, good morning, President Washman, Board of Trustees, Dr. Crawford. As mentioned, my role today is to deliver a program evaluation of how we've spent our state compensatory funds this year. This is part of a requirement from TEA to host an annual public report. Just as information regarding state compensatory education, the role of the funds is to really support and supplement what we already offer students, especially those that are economically disadvantaged or considered at risk, and helping them achieve satisfactorily performance on assessments and improve graduation rates. So, again, these are funds that are allotted to districts based on demographic data, which we report. It is a formula-based allotment, and so 55% of that must be direct cost. So, it means it goes straight to students and that it's supplementing what we are already providing. So, again, some direct cost may be any instructional materials that are outside what we already report as a district and/or staff that is needed to put that materials into place. 45% of that can be indirect cost, and that is meant to sustain the program of what we're implementing. So, salary for administrators may come out of that cost in order to sustain the program that's on the direct cost side. You will hear more specifics about these funds later in the agenda from our CFO, Tasha Bjork. But, again, we utilize approximately 12 million of the allotment on direct cost. Again, that goes straight to how we are supporting students. As we look at some data, again, which is the true evaluation through our campus improvement plans and our district improvement plans, we are looking at our four-year longitudinal summary. So, on the student group side, you'll see our at-risk numbers and then also some demographic data that also qualifies a student to be at-risk. So, the EBEL stands for Emergent Bilingual or English Learner, our homeless students, and any student that qualifies for Title I also is supported by state compensatory education. The summary that you see here is lagging data, so we will not get the data for 2022 graduates until the spring. And part of that is due to our end-of-course assessments retesters and so on. But as we can see, from 2020 to 2021, we had some great improvements in our graduation rates, and our dropout rate was stable and even improved in regards to our homeless students. So, again, as we look at how we utilized our funds primarily with DAEP and supplementing our classrooms with smaller class sizes, we can see that it's had a great benefit to our students. Last month, you also saw some of our STAR data from this past year, which is also great evidence of what we're seeing in our elementary schools and our middle schools as a reflection of how we are using those funds for extra educational programming. Again, these funds are used, similar to Title I funds, to supplement programs. Anything that is considered a modification, which means it affects all students, can come out of indirect cost. And then, again, we have our math results, which you saw last month as well. Again, you're gonna see some very specific numbers from Tasha in what we are proposing for this next coming year, but I'm open to any questions or comments.
Board, does anybody have any questions? I have one on, and I know you might not have it readily available, but I saw, you know, we had 2020 numbers and then graduating class 2021. Was there a dip in 2020, like on those graduation rates, like, you know, COVID, we had the never-ending spring break? I didn't know. Or is it more impressive since all of the protocols and really 2020 and 2021 school year were full of, you know, constraints that we faced educationally? Just didn't know if that class of 2020 had a dip and then we came back up or...
I did work with Dr. Curriton in pulling these numbers, and there was not a significant dip in 2020. However, I think some of the things in tandem with what we put in place with our ESR funding did make an improvement for some of those specific groups. But we can get those numbers.
Just kind of curiosity.
Anecdotally speaking, you know, we've outperformed the region and state graduation rate for a decade now. And so, it's kind of in line with, that's a spike right there. That's a pretty big improvement right there from one year to the other. So, that's a good wondering to have, but we were already there anyways, but we'll get y'all something if we can come up with it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Where is Chris? Is he still watching baseball games?
He's over at the basketball game.
Okay. He went somewhere for a little quick vacay, sorry.
Okay. I think there's also an opportunity for public comment on this as well, so don't see anybody looking to comment out there. So, we do appreciate it. Ms. Chopper. Okay, we have a few updates. First, we have an athletic update.
Coming to the microphone to the hot seat is the Director of Athletics, Mr. Greg Priest, is gonna give you an end-of-the-year athletic update. Must not have more than three to five bullets per slide, three to five slides only. Does not have to talk about every bullet, only the highlights. Just a reminder for you VPA people as well and competitive academics.
Well, I just want to thank the Board and Dr. Crawford for allowing me to come to give the update. Yeah, it's kind of a recap of the season. You know, I think we had a very solid season, very strong season. Our coaches continue to do a good job, and our sports are, you know, trending in the right direction. So, I'm very proud of what we're doing and, you know, although our goals continue to strive to get better and better each year, but I think we're on the right track. Just wanted to touch base on, you know, we had some back-to-back district champions. Last year, we had nine. This year, you know, swim, swim was back-to-back. Soccer, men's soccer was back-to-back, and then golf was back-to-back. So, they're doing a great job, continuing to work hard and doing those things, and then, you know, we had several sports that really competed, competed well throughout the district. Wanted to touch on a few just outstanding programs that we had. You know, Legacy Swim has continued to do really well, you know, as I said, back-to-back district championships. They finished 12th, which, man, I mean, that's a great accomplishment for us to be able to finish 12th in, 12th in the state in 6A. But had a lot of really good showings down there, seventh place. You know, Sam Eckert able to go to Columbia. I think that's really good, having him do everything that he's done and set some school records and just the stuff that they've been able to do is really outstanding with, you know, having the new pool and then, you know, and then to top it off, just being All-Americans, all those guys having the times to be able to do that. So, really, really proud of what they've been able to accomplish there. Legacy softball, you know, we have come a long way from that backstop over at Tyler, I guess...
The Donnybrook? The Donnybrook backstop?
Yeah, just the backstop. You know, getting Coach Niffin here, him taking that program, going over to Faulkner, now having the facilities on campus, and just seeing the things that he's been able to do, the kids that have, you know, that have come from private school and just everything that he's been able to do. And, you know, we had a lot of good representation, you know, the 10-6A Offensive Player of the Year, you know, school record 23 wins, won our first playoff game since 2010. You know, Newcomer of the Year, all East Texas, and then, you know, Coach Niffin getting the Coach of the Year of East Texas. So, that's really good, and, you know, I think that's gonna, that program is really gonna continue to grow, especially with all the new facilities and having that softball field on campus and, you know, and not only just there, but just the facilities at both schools are really gonna help all of our athletic programs. This one right here, I wanted to make sure we did, you know, that I recognize her, but Naomi Moody was the first, you know, that we've got. I think we had two swimmers at Tyler High that are now swimming, and, you know, she competed in the 200 freestyle and the backstroke and qualified for regionals. So, she's the first Tyler High swimmer to ever qualify for regionals. And so, now, actually going into next year, I think we're gonna have five swimmers. So, that program is continuing to grow, but I think that was a great accomplishment for her to be able and come over and do that, and so I wanted to make sure we recognize her on that. Just, you know, some of our playoffs, you know, we had a lot of state qualifiers this year, you know, we continued, you know, we've had cross-country from Hoff to his brother and then, and now, En Salter making it to state. Had several of the next couple, you know, Audrey Dethridge, first player since 2010. Had Jacob Cole, first golfer since 2010. So, a lot of things happened since 2010. So, that was back 12 years ago, and that's going from being bi-district champs in softball to baseball winning their first series since 2010, and this is all legacy. Then we had several regional qualifiers, and, you know, we're continuing to do really good, sending, you know, having representation at the regional meets and, you know, from swimming to tennis to track and cross-country, all those things. And so, everything that we're doing is, like I said, is going in the right direction, and I think we, you know, our athletes are competing at a high level, and we've got really good coaching now that is helping us get to do the things that... Over at Tyler High, we got our main sports back, boys and girls basketball, soccer, team tennis, and volleyball all made the playoffs. You know, we were unable to win a game, you know, I guess a bi-district championship, but we came really close in several events. Came down, you know, girls basketball, lost to Mount Pleasant by one, and boys, same thing on Mount Pleasant. We competed really well. So, soccer, lost in a, lost to Longview in PKs. So, that, you know, so we're, as I said, we're doing some really good things. Boys and girls track, or boys track making it to the regional tournament, and then tennis has continued to be strong. Lone Star Cup, 33 points, 61st for Legacy. You know, I mean, we're gonna stay around that range, you know, we're always gonna run into that third, third round, around in there. We're gonna run into the Allens, to some of those schools, and it's gonna be tough. But, you know, we're striving to get as high as we can, but I think 61st, you know, last year we a little higher, but we're always, you know, our goal is to make sure we stay in that range. Tyler High picked up some more points, just being, you know, there. We want to continue to get better in that, get more, get more of our participation and better improvement there, but we did jump up from last year, getting 12 points. So, those are our overall finishes in the UIL Lone Star Cup.
Swimming doesn't grab any points?
You know, unfortunately, the, you have to finish top five.
Okay.
So, all those sports that we do, that we have done really well in, golf, tennis, except for team tennis, but all your swim, your cross-country, all those things, you have to make it to state, and you gotta finish top five. So, although we win district championship and cross-country, we get no points. So, you have to make it to state and finish in the top five to get those points. And yeah, swim, unfortunately, you know, had a great finish at 12th. We just get no points for it.
Are all of the points based on playoffs typically, aside from the sports that you just...
Yeah, so your team sports, if you make, depending, if you win district, you get four points. If you, and then, if you qualify, you get two points. And then, if you win a district, you know, if you win a district playoff game, you get two. But in all those individual sports, you've gotta finish top five, and we compete really well in those sports. We just do not get points.
So, Tyler High got two points for playoff appearance?
For a playoff appearance.
Legacy got four points for playoff appearance and winning their bi-district?
Yeah, if you look at boys soccer, so boys soccer won the district championship, and then they won, they won their bi-district game, so they got six.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And then, so like softball, softball advanced the playoffs, so they get two points, and they won their first playoff games, too. So, that's kinda, and then the academics part, you know, they picked up four points in academics. As far as college signees, you know, we had 21 at Legacy. I've listed all those there in the red for Legacy, but 21 athletes went on and signed scholarships to play at the next level, and then we had seven from Tyler High that have gone on. So, you know, I think, like I said, we've had some great athletes come through here and, you know, a lot of guys going on to Division One schools, you know, Jamari Miller, it's gonna be exciting to see how he's gonna be this year at Alabama, and Bryson Donnell, and, you know, En Salter is going to, going to Tulsa to run cross-country, and as I mentioned earlier, you got Sam Eckert who'll be at Columbia, so we got some very good, some athletes there that are going on and gonna represent Tyler, Texas, so excited about that. Looking forward to the season. I mean, it is here. You know, volleyball, cross-country, tennis, all started this past week. Freshman football started. Tennis played this week, they're already playing, and it's hard to believe, it is here, and, you know, they've already jumped into matches. I know Tyler High beat Sulfur Springs on Tuesday, and then Legacy played the district 6A, I mean, the state champion, Plano West, and had a really good match against them. So, it is here. Volleyball scrimmage is Saturday, and then football will get kicked off on, everybody will be rocking and rolling on Monday. So, looking forward to that, looking forward to a great season, and just excited about what we're doing and having a great season. So, that is athletics, and be interested, you know, any questions you guys have, we'd be happy to answer.
Feels a little different starting this year out than it did the last two years.
Sure does.
We haven't had to talk about six-feet spacing at football games at Rose Stadium.
That's, yeah, we're back, so it's good. Very good. Anybody have any questions?
Question. In regards to, I know a lot of these kids have been involved in their particular sports for years, you know, early age, they start being involved. How do you go about recruiting additional students to get into the programs that may have an interest but really haven't developed their talent?
Well, yeah, I think our youth sports, that program that we're doing now, I think that is really, you know, especially with basketball and volleyball, that's, I think that's helping us recruit more kids, you know, that traditionally wouldn't play in the past or had no experience. I think that's gonna be a good benefit, but it's also getting our, you know, so the next part of that is getting our coaches down to the middle school and getting them there to make presentations in front of those, in front of those middle school athletes and catching them at a young age and trying to, trying to get those kids interested. But you're right, I mean, it goes, and you've gotta have coaches that are passionate about it, and it's, you know, they have, that have high expectations, that want to get in there and want to build a program. It goes way beyond just, hey, I made an, we made an announcement over the PA system, or we sent, you know, or we sent out a memo. It's getting in front of those students and, you know, because it's, they're only gonna be passionate if you're passionate about it. And so, that's, you know, some of those programs that, you know, and specifically, you know, the things that I'm wanting to make sure that we grow is, is girls track at Tyler High and also cross-country. Continue to do that and get athletes and field teams and not just have a few athletes. But our coaches have to be passionate about it, and they, it's gotta be really important to them, so catching those kids at a young age and doing that.
Couple of things to enhance that. We've worked hard on the last eight years since Greg came here as AD. One is scheduling high school coaches at the high school, and our principals have always worked well with us, to have enough time for those high school coaches to get down to the middle schools. And not just get down there and just watch with their hands in their pocket and twirl their whistle, but to actually coach in support of our, of our programs at the junior high. How consistent that's been, that's athletic department's supposed to supervise that, but we try to remove the barriers that we possibly can. The other thing is making sure that we have direct feeder patterns. So, that's one, that's another thing. Actually, there's three things. The direct feeder pattern. The other thing is to make sure it's understood that the high school head coach runs the feeder, is responsible for that feeder pattern. We don't operate in silos. Our junior high programs run their own thing with no accountability to the high schools. That's, that was a Tyler thing for a long time. That's when you go to some of our schools and you see, we won the city championship at this middle school, but they were doing completely different stuff than what the high school should be working on. Well, high school coaches are okay with that sometimes, because that's less work for them. We don't, that's not what we prescribe to here. Our high school coaches should be leading, directing what's going on at the middle schools. So, that org chart is very similar to the way we've got our org chart developed. You don't operate in a silo if you're a junior high coach, you run what the high school wants you to run. Is that right, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I think we have, we have put that in place. We have gotten better, but we are nowhere near where we need to be on it. We have to continue to get better, as Dr. Crawford mentioned, as far as getting our coaches there. We are better. We are definitely better than we've been, but we still have a long way to go.
You know, we hire new coaches to come in, they say, well, we need this, and we need this, and we need this, and this, and we, what do we do? You got it. And now, we need to see the integrity to say what you want, to go do what you asked for when you came to Tyler, Texas, or when you asked Coach Priest to fix something. You know, we don't tell our principals no very much, and we don't tell our coaches no very much. We try to give them the resources to be successful. It's their job to get those numbers up, and if they're not doing that, that is a concern of ours. We've talked about that. I think we have another update, and we'll have one in January or February. We've laid out some expectations about some things getting corrected, all the way from using blocks and track and coaching that, and coaching kids how to come out of the blocks and track. Drives me crazy, Mr. Newsom, the old stand-up start in track, and then, I can't believe I'm talking about that with the dice. Two, getting their numbers up. And there are, it's work ethic. It is determination to go down there to a sixth or seventh grader and getting them hooked then. That is the key. And if we're not doing that, then the things that we've provided for these coaches, Greg, we'll say it from the dice, don't need to be intact, or we need, change the people to change the people. We need to have people that want to win in Tyler, Texas, and see the value of getting into extracurricular activities, whether it be fine art or athletics, and getting them in those classes. We're not an employment agency just to keep coaches employed. We want kids being able to access that, so glad you brought that up, Mr. Newsom. Gives me a chance to coach Coach Priest.
I would say you're talking about the starting blocks, or also making sure we have four people in a sprint relay, that we have all four people.
All right. There could be a little seventh grade blondie running this year, there better be four in that relay.
And that happened to be mine. They missed, they didn't have a person to hand off to.
That's right.
So...
Oh, my gosh. Well, to your point, a little interest from an authoritative figure from a high school can go a long way in a middle schooler's life and a perception of what they can do, and it can spark some inspiration. And I think sometimes, you know, we probably forget that, you know, so, but it can inspire a kid to really wanna be good at something if they think somebody might believe in them a little bit in order to recruit them. I know, oh, anyway, second point, the public so graciously blessed us and approved a bond for Hubbard, and I know we, it's the last middle school, we have to do, do we have a good plan? It's, unfortunately for the kids that are in athletics over there, it's right on the athletic field. We got a good plan for what, how it's gonna look for the people on track and football, any outside sports over there at Hubbard?
Yes, because, I mean, and we've had to deal with it with Moore and Bolter and those schools, because we were all, or actually, when we were at Moore, we, and so I think this transition will actually probably be a little easier than what Moore was. But being able to come over and, you know, especially with the extra practice field and those things, we worked out schedules to do that. You know, the past few years, we've been playing our, you know, Hubbard has played their middle school games at, you know, volleyball and basketball over at Legacy, and so, you know, I think that's been a pretty good trade-off, being able to play on the high school courts and things like that. So, but yes, as far as football and moving soccer and running track, we've kind of gotten that schedule worked out. So, it's not ideal, but it is, we do have a good plan in place to make that transition for the next couple of years.
So, it'll be two years, maybe more. You never know. It just depends on the scheduling as far as the field goes.
Right.
So, bus will be utilized to bus kids back and forth from Hubbard over to Legacy?
Yeah, so we'll bus, we'll bus over. I believe, you know, we've got, band is on the field from 6:45 to 7:45. We're gonna go over and, football will go over and warm up, probably right there by the soccer field and, or the softball field, and as soon as they move off, we will move on. We also have the indoor, working with Coach Willis, being able to utilize that indoor, that space there, too. So, the good thing is we have enough facilities there to accommodate everybody, being able to move our high school schedules. If we were back in the schedule where we had freshman and high school, freshman and varsity athletes all in the same period, that would be difficult. But since we have moved that schedule and freshmen are in a different period now, that has opened up some space, and that'll, that'll help us, so. But yeah, so it'll be our football, football first, and, you know, and we'll have, may have to make some changes to be able to accommodate it, but as right now, I feel like we've got a good plan and have everything set in place to be able to pull us off.
Well, good deal. As you, as you pull into Legacy from shallow on your left, there's just that grass. Does that ever get utilized for anybody?
Well, it is a grass field, but I don't know how leveled that thing is, so there's probably, you know, a lot of potholes.
Probably, just like what I grew up playing on.
Yeah. But I think that was the, you know, we long-range plan of being able to do that, but I think everything's kind of growing in, and we haven't kind of gotten to that point yet.
Well, good deal. Anybody else have any comments or questions before we let Mr. Priest go? Coach Priest? Okay.
Well, thank you, guys, and looking forward to seeing y'all at some sporting events.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have a competitive academics update.
So, pinch-hitting for Mr. Brown today will be Dr. Kristen Walls. Dr. Walls is our Director of Career Technology Education. She also works at the CT Center, so what a perfect fit to be able to pinch-hit for Dr., excuse me, Mr. Brown, Dr. Walls, competitive academics.
Hi, good morning. How is everybody? President Washman, Dr. Crawford, and Board Trustees, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share some good news with you, our competitive academics update. So, we're gonna start off today with middle school. We had our UIL academics for middle school that was held at Tyler High this year, and teams and for... And the teams, in first place, we had more M S T, second Hubbard Middle School, and then in third place, Three Lakes. We also did hold a U I L for elementary, which was held at the C T C. However, they didn't do team results. So it was on an individual basis. They're working on participation and kind of really building. Can you hear me? Okay. Building that program to get more and more involved as they move from middle school to high school. For high school, for District thirteen, three A, the Early College High School participated in their district meet. We had four regional qualifiers that went to the region and that's where they kind of ended there. We had fifteen, District fifteen, five A, Tyler High School. At Tyler High, they held the district meet and we had three regional qualifiers for that particular meet that time. Moving on to Tyler Legacy. Tyler Legacy had their district meet actually held at Tyler Legacy. Of course, we have some new facilities, so many of the schools have decided to go into them. So like Tyler High, we had that and Tyler Legacy. The Tyler Legacy was the academic district champion out of that particular meet. And we also had speech and debate district champions. Out of that meet, we had forty regional qualifiers and then three state qualifiers. And so a really great performance there. And then speech and debate, because U I L is state, so speech and debate also had an opportunity to participate on a national basis for the nationals, speech and debate championships. And so we had five national qualifiers and at a previous board meeting, some of those individuals were recognized. Now we're moving on to career and technical student organizations, our C T S Os. We had some state contest participants with the DECA, Distributive Education Clubs of America. We had two that participated in the state level, as well as the Future Business Leaders of America, which were four, and that were, those individuals were from, from Tyler High. And in Skills USA, we had twenty students that participated at the state level. And then Technology Students of America, we had ten. And from those ten, we had a Division Two State Championship Team that went to Dallas for Nationals. And so out of all of those individuals at Nationals, we had the cybersecurity national champions. And so they placed first place. So I'm very proud of them. We have one student, Rahul, he is actually onto U T Austin, but the other two, they're going to be still here at Tyler Legacy and continue on. So we're looking forward to some really great things coming up this year as well. So just want to kind of give you an update on what we have in store for us this year. You can see the different types of contests that we'll be heading into. Really this fall, our U I L academic coordinators and they're trying to do the recruitment and continuing to bring more and more students to participate, not only in the U I L academics, but also the C T S Os. And so, do you have any questions or comments?
Board, anybody have any questions or comments?
Early College High School, we do have a competitive academics program and team over there, right? So during the bond presentations, I was asked about that and of course, there was a little bit of concern that maybe a parent or two said, we did not have those, but we do have those.
We do.
So my encouragement to Mr. Jones, who supervises high schools, is to make sure that Early College High School and their parents and all of their students know that we have these competitive academic teams and programs. And what district are they in?
They're District thirteen, three A.
Thirteen, three A. So I don't even know who's in that district. Frankston, somebody like that? Well, we need to find out and we need to compete. That is an A-rated campus, that are all early, early college, high school students, they're college-bound students taking college courses. They're sharp kids over there. We want our numbers up over there. So Ms. Miss Hortman got her year, her Grace year, her Cinderella year. Let's, let's get after that because we can compete, especially at the three A level with Early College High School. So just want to make sure we, we under, we are acknowledging, we do have competitive academics at Early College High School.
We do. We actually, the competition was in Pittsburgh, which was Region Eight, and then when we qualified, that was actually held at T J C.
Okay, so we're in there with that, that side of town, that side of East Texas, it looks like, okay.
Question. How do, how do you go about getting your students to participate in U I L?
Part of it is with, mainly each campus generally will have a U I L coordinator. And so that often is a teacher, whoever's coordinating at all campus levels. And then they start recruiting different students who, if they're wanting to participate in particular things. So it could be math, science, there's multiple things that they're going to participate in, even student recruitment. And so other students will recruit other students based upon that. They'll say, hey, you, you know, I really love you in math and you need to join this team. So a lot of those recruitment efforts are, you know, started at the beginning of the school year so they can practice and work on their skills and so that we can have the results that we are.
Are the teachers actively involved? When they see students that have the potential, do they refer or refer them to the U I L coordinator?
Yeah, so like if you have English teachers and math teachers and things, a lot of them are also, they sponsor each team, so they are also reaching out to them. So even if a student may or may not decide that they want to, they try to recruit heavily to get them on their teams.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
This last thing, just, we love competing in athletics and we love competing in fine arts. This is important to us. Kids being a part of something, being a part of a team, while they may not be athletically gifted or artistically gifted, they have gifts and we need to reach those intelligences. I say that every time we talk about this, there's nothing that prides me more than this one. You know, I expect us to compete in football, I expect us to compete in one act play, and we should do well at all the things like that. This is the one right here that can really make you stick your chest out. It, it's, if we can, you know, when we come back and we see national speech and debate qualifiers and people going to state and TSA and, and, and other contests, that should make you proud. Because not every kid wants to be at the Friday night football game on Friday nights or wants to get up on stage to compete or is gifted enough to actually produce something to put in a, compete artistically. This right here can reach a lot of kids. So looking forward to getting away from COVID, I mean, it was still around, but the restrictions that we had in place that caused us a little dent in our K through twelve programming as far as competitive academics go, elementary through middle school and all the way to high school. Thank you, Dr. Walls.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a visual and performing arts update.
Well, it looks like Ms. Dykman, our Executive Director of Student Support, drew the straw to be able to provide you the V P A update from this last year. Obviously Sandy Newton put this together and is no longer employed in Tyler. She's in Humble. Appreciate the job she did. We're going to turn it over to Ms. Dykman to give the report.
Yes, I am the super sub for today. So President Washman, Dr. Crawford and Board of Trustees, thank you for this opportunity. We will work through these slides. The Texas Commission of the Arts granted a joint performance with the Hellbein Jazz Initiative at the Bolter Jazz Band Festival. Bolter, Dixie and Tyler High School choirs all performed. We have a lot of U I L success, including superior ratings for Moore, Bolter and Hubbard for concert and sight reading and Three Lakes received sweepstakes honors with their varsity U I L concert and sight reading success continues. Tyler Legacy Choir and Band earned sweepstakes awards and Hog Choir received a superior These art pieces were selected to represent visual arts at the Capitol Exhibit Austin and Caldwell and Legacy are represented here. Big Art Day celebrates visual arts education. Participating schools included elementary, middle and high school campuses and they're listed the right. Your, your left. The vase, junior vase and team represents the Visual Arts Scholastic Event that Tyler hosted for high school, middle and elementary students. So a lot of participation, a lot of opportunity to be exposed to the fine arts. Tyler High School had four artworks and Tyler Legacy had two artworks that received the top score of four at the state vase event. Tyler I S D celebrated five teacher recognitions for contribution to arts education in East Texas by the young audiences of Northeast Texas. And they're listed there, Caldwell, Three Lakes, Tyler High and Raimi. The Dallas Brass started in Tyler on their national tour and conducted clinics with all middle school and high school bands. The Link Up Partnership with the East Texas Symphony Orchestra provided a great opportunity for fourth and fifth grade students in choir, orchestra, band and theater. So great recruiting opportunity there. The Tyler Legacy Color Guard won the grand champion award at the N T C A competition and it was their first time to compete in school history. So that was a pretty cool success they had.
You know, I'm really glad to see that. Because I can remember them practicing back in the old R E L Tile Gym every Tuesday and even Friday nights, like the basketball game would be over. People be going home and the, the core was still back there practicing, weren't they, Coach Priest? Yep. So this is a great culmination.
It paid off for sure. Caldwell Arts Academy advanced their string class, received a superior rating at the American Classic in Dallas and more middle school and Tyler Legacy orchestra programs received sweepstakes for U I L concert and sight reading. So high honors there as well. One Act Play, Caldwell won first place in their competition and Tyler Legacy advanced to by district. Another great recruiting opportunity, the Elementary Honors Choir won a superior rating and it was their first time to compete. Tyler I S D Arts Fest enjoyed a very busy day as they celebrated programs, performances and victories for the school year. Lots of participation that day. The Best Communities for Music Education honored Tyler I S D with a national distinction for the fourth year in a row. So there are a lot of successes to celebrate and we applaud Tyler I S D visual and performing arts programs and certainly impressed with the variety of student talents and accomplishments.
Greg?
Any questions?
Are there any questions? I have a very in-depth question about visual and performing arts for you. I'm just kidding. I know you're subbing, so we'll go easy on you.
Well, just a, a comment there or a couple of comments. You know, music choices for that all-district choir, I think we've kind of heard a little bit about that from parents about modernizing that a little bit. It's great to be in the classical realm, from my limited knowledge about it, but at the same time, you know, if we're talking about getting numbers up, and that's what we always want, we want, we have these great programs, we want more people, more kids to participate in there, we've got to really look at that. And while we may be preferential towards a, a certain style of music, but just, let's have a keen eye on that, Ms. O'Connell, as we go forward in regard to making sure it's okay to spend a lot of time in your classical, maybe your operatic, whatever it's, maybe that's not a term, realm, but let's, let's make sure that we're very diverse in that. The other thing on numbers, I know that there's concern amongst our high school feeder, you know, our high school programs about numbers and then you get down to the middle schools. Of course, it's always like a kick the dog thing, you know, it's always like, I'm going to blame so-and-so for this or blame so-and-so for this or blame so-and-so for this. We really need our middle school directors, orchestra directors, we really need our middle school band directors, our choir directors to get into the elementary schools and showcase what they've got to attract them. When you start talking about sixth grade choice, choice sheets. You know, there's been a lot of talk about going to block scheduling for instructional purposes as the cause to number problems. Well, we're trying to take care of some academic deficiencies that we have, but at the same time, we've got to get into the schools and sell yourself. No longer can you just say, I'm the baseball coach or I'm the band director and kids are just going to show up. They want to see you, they want to see your programming. So I know that there's some concerns about that, especially in our middle school programs all over the district about numbers. We've got to change our, our act. We can't just stay at our campus, in our offices and expect kids to sign up for band or choir or orchestra just because they're there. You have to go recruit, you have to recruit your feeder pattern, you have to recruit your hallways. It's, it's a never-ending process now. So encouraging you that, Ms. O'Connell, as you hear that, Ms. Dykman, I know you're just having to take this because you're, you, you're a super sub. But that, I wanted to make that comment from up here, the numbers, make sure we're clear about that. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Football coaches at the high school, get into the middle schools and recruit your kids. Directors at the high school, get in the, get in the middle schools, recruit your kids. Directors at the middle school, coaches at the middle school, get to your elementary schools and recruit the kids. They're just waiting for someone to, to reach out to them. They may be scared to sign up for that, you just never know. So this little, little coaching there from the dice that block scheduling is not the problem, especially when our academic performance is starting to improve. All right? It's personalities and work ethic. That's, that's, that's always been the issue when you start talking about you're getting your numbers up. So let's, let's work on that, okay?
Speaking of music choices, you know, in fifth grade, I made all-district choir elementary. Do you know what we sang? What Shall We Do With A Drunken Sailor? I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Kind of, kind of ahead of our time there, I think. That's right, you got it. They made, yeah, anyway.
Good.
So I don't know if there's any blowback on that back then or not. Put him in the, put him in the stovepipe till he's sober was one line. That's one thing you could do.
We sang Rainbow Connection in Carthers, Texas, fifth grade choir.
There you go. Moving on, moving on. Budget update for 2023. Yeah, that was probably nineteen ninety-one.
So Tosh Bjork, our CFO, is going to provide your budget update for twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. Obviously, there's a lot of scheduling that goes on with what you can and cannot do. We, we had some good news last week, came in, we got the certified values that came in. I'm sure she'll probably say something about that. But here we are with our budget update as we lead up to budget adoption later this month.
Okay, this is pretty much unchanged from what I gave to you last month, except there's a change in the tax rate, but the revenues and expenses only changed by about two hundred thousand. So if you look at our revenue sources, there was just a small shift from the state funding to local property. It was virtually unchanged though, but we're still around thirty-five state and sixty-two local. And the state formula revenue is around the same, a decrease of three point oh-two million. And that's mainly because of our property tax values going up, our local share increases, which decreases state funding. The local property tax values were up eleven point seven. When I presented before, it was thirteen percent. The tax rate decrease for M and O is point nine five four one, down to point eight seven nine three. And that's because we're limited to two and a half percent of the value increase. And we received that notification last week and that increase in property value taxes will be three point seven million. So our tax rate is, when you combine the thirty cents for debt service, it will be a dollar seventeen ninety-three, which is a decrease of eleven cents. I think before I reported thirteen, but they had a lot of appeals and commercial values came in, that type of thing. And so there was a decrease in the values which caused our tax rate to not decrease as far as I'd projected before. In other revenue sources, the main reason our income has gone up a little bit is because of interest income. You know, the feds recently raised. You know, the feds recently raised rates another seventy-five basis points, so we will finally be earning a little bit of money on our investments. And so, the revenue is going to be up 3.1 million, which is around 1.8% from the previous year. As far as payroll and benefits, y'all approved the package back in June of increasing teacher base pay to fifty thousand, administrators 2% of midpoint. We increased the base hourly rate for clerical manual trades to $12 per hour, along with increases in the pay grade basis. Now, this is one thing that was added in since the last time we had a discussion because we had a little extra money. We increased the substitute pay rates. And then the other things were listed, the police officer stop and expense, all that was the same. So, payroll and benefits will be up 2.45 million. And then the use of funds as far as an instruction, an instructional support, that's the same as last time. And departmental and operating also the same. I think a preventive maintenance fund, which is three pennies of the tax rate, is going to be a little over $3 million next year. It was 2.7 this past year. So, our expenditure increase, we have a balanced budget, 3.12 million. Any questions?
Any questions from the board, comments? Everybody feel pretty familiar with all of this? Okay?
Run it back to about three slides back, please. One more. There you go. So, just wanted to take a look at that again. Third bullet from the bottom, increase in stop and expenses for middle school coaches. That's been something we've dealt with administratively recently. Coach Priest, make sure your coaches know that this board is considering that. It's in the budget, so. Tired of hearing that, coaches.
And the subpay too is one that I've heard a lot about recently in regards to increasing that rate. I'm sure, hopefully, they'll be a little satisfied.
Hopefully. Been in education for 25-plus years and that's something that's talked about every year, including I was a substitute teacher one time.
But they've been very beneficial in the past year or two, though.
Oh, they really have.
All the people out and everything, so we really appreciate them, so.
And, you know, our clerical and manual trade staff, the work you've done on that, Tasha, the board recognizes that. Board, thank y'all for supporting those adjustments as well. It's getting tough to compete all around and, you know, the legislature needs to hear this too. It seems like public ed always, you know, just we're a bunch of whiny people, a bunch of wasps, and, but they've got some work to do. Teacher compensation, that is something that's going to wind up being a pretty hot topic coming up, you know, basic allotment, whether it goes in the basic allotment or they force you to do an across-the-board raise versus maybe targeting hard-to-staff positions or where you're, you know, where you're really needing it the most. And that's pre-K through five, early literacy and numeracy and, you know, your core areas that you're accountable to. The last time they did it, nineteen, they'd made 70% of it had to go to an across-the-board raise, didn't have any district discretion on that. That's because legislators can go back to their districts and say, we gave teachers raises. In another model, if you just do the basic allotment, you let the district and the board decide locally how to distribute that, maybe not every teacher gets a raise. We want all our teachers to get a raise, but then again, we also want to be able to hire effective and quality teachers where we're hurting the most, and that is in literacy and numeracy. Even though we're making improvements, that's where it needs to be targeted. So, some creative compensation models might need to be adjusted. It might be tougher on HR and finance to work, but we need to start looking at that. You know, our goal is to get to 60. It may not be everybody at 60K starting salary, but we need to start looking for that down the road. We just got to 50 this year, but we need to be able to compete for the best and the brightest, make sure we're saying that publicly at the DIAS. More compression's coming from the state, you can take it off there now. More compression's coming from the state, that's a big deal. Y'all have heard Lieutenant Governor talk about, that's one of his biggest spends in regard to what they're talking about with the revenue, is compressing even further. So, next year, we're going to, you'll see another large compression as far as tax rate goes. And they're also talking about a sixtieth, or $60,000 permanent home state exemption. So, remember, it used to be at 25, then it went up to 40. That was statutorily voted on this last year. They're talking about going, locking it in, making it 60. You know, we always talk about we don't have enough money for public ed and yet we're talking about some of these things. So, the calculus down there in Austin is different from our seat, especially with the caps that they've put on for us and the, as far as us having to kind of govern or what we're able to provide our teachers as well, as far as raises go. So, it's going to be an interesting session and just wanted to kind of brief y'all on that.
Good deal. Okay, thank you, Tasha.
I've got two items.
All right. Two items. Let's get to the next ones then. Consider approval of board meeting date for the purpose of adopting the budget and proposed tax rate. We're into our action item, part of the agenda.
And this is a required approval and it's, tomorrow in the paper we'll be running that we're going to propose $11793 is our tax rate and also published the date of the meeting is August 22nd, so that's all this is.
Okay, August 22nd.
How much did we go down on the INS?
Well, it was, let's see, it would have been eight cents. And then, oh, INS is three, MNO is eight.
Ms. Heinz, what did we tell the public whenever we were out presenting the bond election, how many, we might could do what? A penny? Okay, so we're going down to three? Okay. So, for those of people on Facebook that said we were lying, I guess we're not, right? Fake book? Okay, all right, sorry.
And I know when I was out, you know, pitching the bond, I was definitely presenting.
Well, you can actually say pitching now because of past.
I was pitching the dang thing.
Yeah, okay, there you go.
That I was looking forward to lowering the tax rate. I mean, and I love that we are getting to fulfill that promise to the public there. So, okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on approving the board meeting date.
Motion to approve August 22nd as the date for adopting a budget and proposed tax rate.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, the motion carries. Next, we will consider the approval of the proposed budget and expenditures for state compensatory funds for 2022 and 2023.
We're required by law to approve the budget for state comp ed before we approve the budget for the general fund. So, that's all this is. It shows a summary of what we spent the funding on in 21, 22, and it was around 12 million. And in 22, 23, I'm projecting 12.1, but we never really know till we get our census block info because it's based on that and we usually don't know that till spring, we won't know that till spring of '23. So, we pretty much use it for DAEP, RISE, pre-K we can use, summer school programs, mentoring alliance, that type of thing, technology devices and instructional aids for the classroom because that's supplemental, that type of thing.
Lot of acronyms on the supplemental programs and then we spelled out kindergarten, you know? Do I have a motion on that item?
I move that we approve it.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, and the motion carries. Okay, next we have to consider the approval of the Student Code of Conduct.
So, y'all had the first reading of the Student Code of Conduct last meeting along with a presentation by Director of Constituent Service, John Johnson, and Deputy Superintendent Chief of Staff, Ron Jones. That's the division that has discipline inside of its responsibilities. So, here would be the second reading and the call for y'all to take action in regard to approval of the Student Code of Conduct in time for the 2022, 23 school year. There have been years where we adopted this thing in September. So, this is in front of y'all before the actual school year starts. Proud of the staff getting that work done and making sure that there was corrections. Or there was no corrections, is that correct? There were no corrections. So, what we all saw last meeting and worked on, nothing's been changed since then, okay?
Okay. Any highlights or discussion before we entertain a motion to approve the Student Code of Conduct?
Couple of questions, just for clarification of how it actually operates, because I've been confused in regards to how the campus's dress code varied from one campus to the other, and I see that each individual school set their dress codes, apparently. They have the authority to do that on the campus?
We allow them to do what they want to do as far as dress code under certain standards. Mr. Jones worked with a select group of, or a variety of principals and assistant principals to tweak some of the dress, the standardization that goes out, but as far as whether or not you have a standardized dress, in other words, you're going to have a white, blue or gray shirt and khaki pants, that's left up to the actual campus as well.
Okay, and then they have a campus behavior coordinator that enforces that dress code or?
So, every campus per statute has to have an identified person as a campus behavior coordinator. That could be an assistant principal, it could be a counselor. It is not the same position on every campus. We let the principals determine who that would be. As far as judging if you're out of dress code or not, you know, it's, I've always said this as a former principal myself, it's kind of like when I have to drive from Tyler to Dallas and I'm going 80 and the guy next to me is going 75, he gets pulled over, but I was going 80.
Right.
Can't get everything all the time, so there are certain standards that we put out there and we try to correct that as possible. When it gets out of, when it gets out of, so out of control is when the administration kicks in. It's not just the campus behavior coordinator that does that, it's just that person's responsibilities or, you know, make sure data's being implemented, that there is behavior coordination at the school. That's the person you go to for the discipline at the school, even though it's the entire administrative team that does it. Anything to add on that, Mr. Jones? Or Dr. Grupel?
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, do I have a motion on that item?
I move we approve the Student Code of Conduct.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, the motion carries. Next, we have consider approval of a few local policies, CFC, CKC and DH.
These are second readings that you had in your, from your, from the regular board meeting, the back of July board meeting that you had. Gave y'all opportunity to ask questions in the meantime, so here it is for your presentation for second adoption, or for adoption.
Okay.
Motion to approve the policy updates.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? As have it, the motion carries. Moving on to approval of Head Start Annual Program Self-Assessment for 2021 and 2022 and the Improvement Plan for '22 and '23.
It's on page 28 of your packet. Dr. Grupel? Come to the table for any questions that you may have in regard to the ins and outs of the Head Start program. This is a routine annual action, by the way.
How you doing, Mr. Grupel?
Doing well. As Dr. Crawford said, this is just a routine part of our Head Start program with a program evaluation as well as a needs assessment for the upcoming school year.
Great. Any questions or comments regarding this specific item? Hearing none, I will go ahead and entertain a motion on this Head Start item.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, the motion carries and next we'll consider the approval of Head Start Annual Report to the public of 2021 and 2022.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it, and the motion carries.
Dr. Grupel, was that posted on their website?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, do we have anything else to discuss or any reason to go back into executive before adjournment? Okay, we'll slide back into executive then and then we'll come back out and adjourn here in a little bit.